Well, unfortunately, I'm not that sophisticated. But this is the initial. Yes, yes. This is the invite.
Hey, how are you?
You what? Are you serious?
We're gonna break the meeting in order. Welcome to the Pickle City Commission regular meeting Tuesday, July 15th. We will begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Will the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Vetter.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Mayor, I'd like to motion that we excuse Commissioner Simmons and Commissioner DeBrosse tonight.
Yeah, they both sent messages. One's on vacation and one is caring for a sick loved one. And moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Both excused.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
And Commissioner Homan.
Present.
All right. Next on our agenda is the motion to approve the business agenda. And on that business agenda, the rules of conduct are included. I'm not gonna read through them, but we will follow the rules of conduct.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I'd like to add to old business ordinance O-9-25, which was tabled at the last meeting and was tabled to be brought back up at this meeting.
Seconded motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda has been amended. All right.
I'd make a motion that we approve the rules of conduct for tonight's meeting.
Seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would have moved that we approved the entire business agenda, I think was the correct motion.
That's why. All right.
Seconded.
I'll second it. Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next, we have a presentation from the fire committee to provide an update.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, good evening. It feels like it's just been a couple of days since we were just up here, but here we are. So the committee has met a couple of times since we were last up here. Once on the 26th of June and once on July 9th. And we're kind of, we're working right now just on getting through the documents that we've got and at the same time trying to go through the questions that the commission proposed for us to answer. And we're just going to, you know, taking one question at a time, going down the list and working through it. The big thing that we've been working on since we last met was, has been interviewing people. Getting interviews lined up. We did have one interview on July 7th, which was successful. We got some good information out of that. We have another interview scheduled for next week. And just for the sake of transparency, I did have a discussion with Commissioner DeBrosse about having the commission possibly sending out a letter to individuals that we would still like to sit down with and talk to. At the last meeting, I think I said that we're talking about folks who are no longer with the city. I misspoke on that. There's actually a decent number of city employees that we'd like to sit down with. So if we could have the commission's assistance in getting those people to sit down with us, that'd be fantastic. But for the folks that are no longer with the city, having a letter sent out would be fantastic. So, I mean, that's really all I had tonight. It was pretty brief. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
No. Keep letting go.
Do we have any comments?
Yeah. I think I'm curious. At some point, there will be an end to your activity.
Correct.
Are you feeling like you can see that inside or is that still off in the future some way?
I don't wanna rush it. We don't wanna rush just because we wanna do a good job, but...
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned. And I don't know, earlier this afternoon, I did send a list of the folks that we would like to interview to all five commissioners. Hopefully you got that. If you did not get that, I have some hard copies with me. I don't know if you want a hard copy or...
I love a hard copy. And I have not received anything from you, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a quarterly financial update.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I just wanna give a brief update tonight. We put together the budget versus actual statements for some of the major funds, just like we presented a few months ago. Would you mind bringing that up, Kim?
Yeah, it doesn't wanna move to the other screen.
Pardon?
It doesn't wanna go to the my other screen, which is bizarre.
Well, they're working on that. Need to read this announcement that we have a new media technician for the meetings and tonight is their first meeting. They're working behind the scenes and will be doing their very best, but if we experience any technical hiccups, please be patient as this is their first meeting. Thank you. That's not him.
Mayor, do you have an interest in a motion to amend the agenda to work on the consent agenda and then go back to the quarterly financial update? Sir? Mayor, I'd move that we amend the agenda to do the consent agenda portion now with the quarterly financial update after the consent.
She just got a second motion.
It's too late.
Yep. Or Matt.
I retract my motion.
Okay. So this is, these are BBA statements, budget versus actual. This has two years prior history of actuals and then this year's budget and then the current actual numbers to date for revenues and expenditures. I won't, I did, I won't go through every statement here. I know there's a lot of information. I put that out on the web this afternoon and I'll send that to the commissioners after the meetings who have that. Probably in the future, I'll try to get that out there on the web a couple of days ahead so the public, you know, has time to copy it if they want to. But what I did wanna do tonight was just kinda hit some updates, some highlights. I've summarized some numbers for this. So just a couple of things about this statement, though. We're talking about, if you go to the very last column on the right, just so people can kind of understand what they're looking at. This compares the budget to the actual numbers to date. So this is really what we wanna watch throughout the year as we're monitoring the use of the budget. You know, we would, you know, expect for that percentage to keep growing. We kinda watch those percentages and, you know, if something kinda looked way out of line, then we might, might investigate that. Although if you have a higher or lower percentage, doesn't necessarily mean anything's wrong. Just could mean the timing of revenues or something like that. So if you'd like to bring up the other file. Okay, so this first one here on the, what I did here was I compiled the fund balances out of that report. The fund balances, current fund balances as of, and this is as of May 31st, these numbers. And then I also included the cash balances. They're also in that report by fund. And then I looked at last year's cash balances as of the end of May and just as kind of a comparison. But I did want to, you know, explain the difference between the fund balance and the cash balance real quickly so kinda make more sense. But, so we do our accounting on an accrual basis. So the numbers include, you know, receivables and payables and accrued numbers. So it's not just strictly cash. That's why the fund balance is different from the cash balance. So for instance, on the general fund, you know, fund balance is 15.2 million, the cash balance is 14 million. And the big difference on that were receivables. I mean, there's some other numbers in there, but the big ones were a couple of receivables, income tax receivable and receivables from other funds. So that's why those numbers are different. Then when you get down to the enterprise funds, those are, as you can see, are a lot different. And that's because enterprise funds, the funds we, the statements we put together also include their assets, their capital assets and debt and so forth. So includes everything related to those funds. So that's why there's a big difference there. Now, as you can see, the cash balances from last year at this time were very comparable to this year, except for probably the biggest difference would be in the police, the safety fund. So I just wanted to kinda touch on that real quickly. That was due to a couple of different things. We've got, for one thing, in '24, we started out the year with a higher cash balance. So then it looks like, so at this point, at the same point this year, then it's kinda, it looks like it's a big swing, but it's not had to do with the timing of the, how we ended up the year in '24 and '25. And also, we have started making those transfers over to the capital projects fund for the fire truck. So we've already transferred 125 thousand from the safety fund over to that fund for that purpose. And also, we've had some capital purchases in both departments in the safety fund and a lot of those have already happened, which is what I wanted to point out. I mentioned about the percentages on the, when you're looking at percentages on line items. So if you're looking at the capital overlay line items in those two departments, then it looks like the percentages are real high. You might wonder why they spend, why are they this high this early in the year? Just because they've already made those purchases that were in their budget. So it looks like a big swing, but I don't really see it as an issue at this time. Do you wanna go to the next slide? This was just a summary of the revenues and expenditures. I just pulled these out to, you know, so you can see the amount of actual revenues and actual expenditures in each fund to date. And looking through the report, the BBA report, the percentages, it looks like most things are, just about everything seems to be tracking pretty close to what you would expect at this time of year. So I guess I put that out there. I have to send that to you. If you have any detailed questions, you know, I'd be glad to, you know, look into that and get back to you if you have any particular questions on particular line items.
And it's on the website now.
Yeah, well, tomorrow, I sent, I emailed it seconded, but it's, I guess it's not out there. It'll be out there tomorrow.
And Commissioners, have any questions?
Yeah.
All right. No questions. Thanks for the presentation. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes from the June 17th, 2025, regular commission meeting.
And I think we've also included in the consent agenda the resolution of appreciation for, for our volunteers.
I'm sorry. Yes.
All right. So routinely, we have a resolution where we appreciate all people who volunteer for the city of Pickwa. It is a lengthy list and if you have done anything to help us, the city of Pickwa, we appreciate you and you were put on the volunteer list and you are greatly appreciated. It will be posted. Do we know when? Anybody? When it will be posted?
Tomorrow.
It'll be posted tomorrow. Lot of, lot of nice people dedicating their time and effort to help the city of Pickwa. We appreciate them greatly. So thank you.
Mayor, I would move that we would approve the consent agenda.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now back to old business. We're gonna start with O-9-25.
Mayor, this resolution or this ordinance was tabled at our last meeting to be brought back up at this meeting. I think that because of several circumstances, we should retable it to the next meeting, which I believe is on the 17th or the 19th, August 19th. So I would move that we retable ordinance O-9-25 until the August 19th.
Did we not hear back from...
Right.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
All right. Motion to table ordinance O-9-25. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Vetter.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
All right. Commissioner Kerry, it is tabled to our next meeting. Next on the old, for old businesses, ordinance number O-10-25.
And ordinance to amend Title 15 land usage Pickwa development code.
Has anything changed? We, we did request the fence language.
Yeah, so the fence language is the only thing that changed. That was at the very back under 4.3. It would be the last. That was the, what the wall or fence could be constructed of where the outline for chicken wire was left. However, the height and placement restrictions that were originally proposed were stricken from.
Okay. Any questions from Commissioner?
Not at this time.
Kim Heisler?
Hello, guys. I'm not sure if I got this right thing on the code. I know we talked about like, you mentioned like the chicken wire. Is this the same with the chain link fence or did you just mention that?
Just mentioned.
Okay. So is this also the one that talks about the two different? Opening it up so that, say, like Home Depot could have the whole area and have mixed usage? Is this all part of the same thing?
Jen?
It'd be a planned urban development, yes. That was the original.
This is the same ordinance we're talking about? So I just, I'm just, I'm just curious. I know I had asked last time and I don't see Kyle here, but what is the reasoning that it's happening now? There's, there's nothing, nothing in sight where people are asking for this to happen or you do have plans for this?
We don't have plans in this. Normally in municipalities, you have a PUD implementation process within your zoning code. When Kyle and I started here, we noted that there was not one put into here. So it was our intent to add the ability to do one.
Okay, so in reading through that, it seemed like it is like wide open. So as soon as this is passed, it allows for any larger corporation that has chunks of land to come in and pretty much do what they want, even though it has to come through a commission.
It's not.
There's a lot that's up for discretion, though.
It all has to meet subject approval. There's residential, there's mixed uses and all of that would have to gain approval. That would all be in a public hearing. It would all be approved by planning commission.
Okay. So I just want a little bit more clarity here. On 2.10, 2.20, Planned Development, General Development Standards, A, last paragraph, it says, "It is also recognized that individual final development plans may meet certain criteria through cross guarantees." What does cross guarantee? I mean, to me, that sounds like, okay, once these guys approve it, then there's guarantees in place that regardless if they go against it, they're guaranteed to continue forward with it. To me, that sounds kind of a little bit contradictory or set up so that someone come in, can come in with plans, have it all planned out like a final thing. And even though it says the planning can't persuade or whatever, decisions are being made prior. So whatever the planning commission recommends, these guys aren't gonna go against it unless they're actually looking at all of that. So to me, it sounds like it's set up so that someone can, can come in, do whatever they want because there's a guarantee, cross guarantee type thing. Can you explain exactly what that means?
Well, cross guarantee, there's a lot of different agreements that take place in a large development, whether that be a utility agreement, a land usage agreement, certain residency, density impacts, like, there's a lot of different things that go into the development. So sometimes you can get approval for something and you would still have to have that approval to get something else.
Kind of like available.
Something such as it has to be a certain density. When you change it, you would still, you would have that cross guarantee of what was previously approved to still do it.
Kind of like bill pass. In Washington, in which there's writers on them that gets passed as well, right? So it's confusing to me and it seems like it's at, a lot of these things in here are at the discretion of a community services staff who, who, I mean, cause it also says that applicant is encouraged to engage in informal consultations. Informal conference, I understand that. Consultations with the city of Pickwa Community Services Staff. Who exactly is the community services staff?
Myself and Kyle.
Okay, so individuals that aren't necessarily voted on by the public are making major decisions for the community. And I understand you guys have been in the business, it's your forte. And yet, you guys are making a decision pass to these guys.
So I think that's, I think that's where you're off. We make, we're not making any other decision that we don't normally make. We work with developers to conform things to our code and anything that we come up with comes before a governing body to make a final decision. We would not have any say or any more so than we already do on anything that goes to any of our commissions.
Your time's up, Kim.
Thank you.
There were no other public comment cards for this, and this serves as a second reading. Next is new business, resolution number R-82-25.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Miami Valley Equity Partners, LLP, to lease the properties at 128 East Water Street, Suites 101 and 102, Pickwa, Ohio, 45356.
Good evening, commission. These two units that are requested for lease serve multiple purposes. The hotel study conducted in 2023 by Hotel Leisure Advisors identified four sites for two potential hotel locations in Pickwa. Apparently, we've completed the first site, the Old Red Roof Inn site for redevelopment to have a 90 key hotel that will be open in approximately two years. The study also highlighted the need for a downtown hotel located near Spring and Water Street. Having accommodation within walking distance of Fort Pickwa Plaza, Lock Nine and Downtown Businesses is critical for economic activity. This study suggested an occupancy rate of 68% when fully stabilized. With downtown redevelopment of a hotel potentially five years out, the two suites are intended to serve the needs of the fourth floor Pickwa Plaza operations and the need for a green room or sponsor space for Lock Nine. Hampton has advised the city that the two units would be, would enable wedding packages that currently are not available, increasing the potential for revenue on the fourth floor. The business community has expressed a desire for accommodations downtown for the business travelers who currently stay south of town by two exits. Its 68% occupancy is described by the hotel study. The operation and management of the two suites should create revenue while fulfilling the needs for downtown accommodations. To increase Lock Nine sponsorship in 2026, the city intends to offer Water Street Suite to sponsors in the top tier to entice donations. This marketing strategy has been proven to increase participation by the business community and the chamber and main street support this endeavor to immerse it into proposition.
So my understanding is that this will cost us, but it actually will be revenue neutral?
Yeah, it's 68, it's 68% occupancy, that's 600 and, or I'm sorry, 464 room nights. And when you block out for the potential Lock Nine events, it still leaves 438 room nights available. And so what they're, and Hampton does hospitality and so running the calculations through them, it should be budget neutral by year two.
Is the address correct? Is it 128 East or West? West or West?
It should be east. That'll have to get corrected.
It says the east.
I'm sorry, yes, it's east.
It says the east. I'm wondering where that property actually is. I'm trying to...
No, it's the, the building that currently has the tax business in it, the corner water in Spring Street.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I was thinking it was on the other side of the street. Thank you. I clarified.
It's Laird's Tax is in there.
Yeah.
Any questions, Commissioner? Valerie Mulliken?
No, I just, I don't, actually, yeah.
You state your business address.
Valerie Mulliken, Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support Business Address nine eighty-seven East Ash Street here in Pickwa. Suite eight three. And we are looking for space to rent. So it's interesting that it's brought up. But I do have a question. As we are working towards space for rent, I'm wondering, will Hampton leave things set after an event such as they did at the Plaza this last weekend? We're considering utilizing the grand ballroom for an event. And they had a valet for a wedding on Friday night. And they left barricades laying all over that corner of the park. I've got photos, so I'm more happy to share that with you, both Saturday night and on Sunday. The patio equipment was left all over the sidewalk. One of the barricades was blocking handicap parking space and things like that. So I want to know, are they going to treat this other space like that? But more importantly, if I were to rent that space, I want to make sure that they're taking care of these things. I don't want them left for my guests that come and see that. So will that be a problem in the future? Because I understand having a valet for a wedding, that's great. We block off a section of downtown for a wedding, that's fine for whatever reason. We didn't have a problem with this in the past, but I understand trying to draw business, that is, that is a good business move to have a valet. I'm not going to lie, I agree with that. But I am concerned that we leave the barricades strewn all over and we leave the patio furniture strewn all over instead of in the patio area where it was supposed to be.
Yeah, that's the first I've heard of it, but I'll have it addressed.
Be happy to send you the photos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. No other public comment cards on this.
Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two, West Parkway Drive. Just kind of right off the bat, I don't think it's fair to have two commissioners missing and still pass resolutions or ordinances.
Council, what's quorum?
More than the majority is free.
Is that in the charter somewhere?
It is. It's common business.
I would like to recommend then in the future, if you guys could create a different change to have at least four or more. Because I don't.
Yeah, that would require, that's noted, that would require a change to the charter.
Yeah, but you guys would have to.
Yeah. Isn't there a charter review coming up?
Charter review just happened and it's every ten years and, yeah, so it would have to be run up again.
You mean to take place ineffective in ten more years, not now?
The Charter Review Committee is held every ten years. I believe it can be held sooner than that, but it would be the recommendation of the commission to stand up the Charter Review Commission.
And how, who was on the most recent, like, what type of people was it? If citizens wasn't on?
Yeah, they were appointed from the different wards by the commission.
Okay, so back to the resolution. My question is, thirty thousand dollars a year right to rent. How much was it costing us now to accommodate those people coming in? I'm trying to figure out where our revenue is coming from for Crooked Handle.
I don't operate Crooked Handle.
Okay, so let me ask another question then. Way early, about a year and a half ago maybe, when I came, one of the first things that you had said, Paul, was we are not in the real estate business. We are not, we don't take care of business and stuff like that. It seems like all you've done is acquired businesses or got rid of them. Thirty thousand dollars a year to lease is an awful lot of money. And the building was only appraised at like sixty thousand dollars. It seems like thirty thousand a year is just so extremely ridiculous to rent a place. We're outpouring money out the yin yang and there's no money coming back in. How much were we spending prior to this for the Crooked Handle folks?
Again, I don't understand what you're getting at with Crooked Handle folks.
Well, there's thirty thousand. Didn't, didn't you say Crooked Handle accommodated them prior to wanting to get their own place or get to rent?
Yeah, they were donating the space, but it was inconvenient. It was inside their party room and so when it was available, they did use it.
Okay, so we're going from zero to thirty thousand dollars a year, yet another yearly expense.
No, that was a temporary solution. We leased, or we had an RV that was used.
Right, so my question is, how much did that cost?
So the RV to accommodate eighteen out of fifteen bands in order to support them with a green room would be seventeen, let's see if I have a number. Seventeen thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Eight bands, how?
Yeah, and so the level of programming, the bands that are not just local bands, they require green room services amongst other things like the engineering for lights and for sound. So all of that factors into.
So also, okay, thank you. Also in the agreement, it looks like the short term could possibly turn into much longer term. I don't know that that should be allowed either in order of the writing is. But I would like. Do you guys read over the whole agenda to kind of get an idea of what's happening? Or you just kind of go by what these guys say? Because you hardly ever have any questions.
Yeah, because I've already read through it and thought through them and then.
And we talk with them on.
Frequent meetings with city staff.
At what point do you guys notify us, the people, of what is happening prior to getting this view at all?
I mean, I think it's. I think I've made it pretty clear. I think DeBrosse Knight and Commissioner Veteran, Mayor Lee, have made it pretty clear that we meet frequently with city staff.
Right, at different times, right? So you're getting different information. Yeah. You guys are meeting.
We're getting the same information, but your time's up. Thank you.
Yeah, but to, but meeting.
To address some of your points, though, so it sounded like we're spending about seventeen thousand, eighteen thousand on green room services just for the bands. For an additional twelve thousand dollars, we get access to providing additional services for weddings and events that might be taking place at the Plaza that are generating revenue for the city. So, yeah, I hear your point taken that it's going to be a little bit more expensive, but we're getting a lot more out of it by doing it this way. Thank you.
And no other public comment?
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution R dash eight-two dash two-five.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is resolution number R dash eighty-three dash twenty-five.
A resolution accepting for statutory purposes a budget for the calendar year twenty twenty-six.
Commissioners, this resolution brings the tax budget before it is to be passed. This is a statutory requirement that we meet each year. We pass this tax budget, submit it to the county auditor, and that provides, shows the county auditor that we have, we'll have financial needs next year. They look at the expenditures and that demonstrates the need. So then this is part of what the tax budget commission does in their work at the county is dividing out the tax money and the local government revenues between all the subdivisions in the county. And then we delayed this until this meeting. This is actually the statutory date that we would, the last date to approve it, which we have it before you. I'm not asking for an emergency passage of the resolution. We did get an extension from the county auditor to submit the tax budget. And this was not, the tax budget's already done, it has been done, as you know. I sent it to you a while back to pre-review. And so the tax budget was done, but this is to meet the, you know, do the timing of the deadlines and the submission. So what will happen now is we'll, once you pass it, then we will submit it after the ten day period for the resolution to become effective. This in no way affects our taxes or anything. The money that we get from the taxes is, it's not really based on these numbers because these are rough estimates of what we'll spend next year and everybody knows that these will change. However, the only two numbers that they're interested in is the property tax and the local government revenues. And what happens during the work of the County Budget Commission, once they get everybody's tax budgets, is they go through and decide, you know, how to divide the pot of money up, which is, it's already been set. So it's already been agreed upon, so it's not going to change. It's just a matter of how much is available. So in no, in no way affects our taxes. So we'll get this submitted once the ten day period passes and we will have met all of our statutory requirements with the county auditor.
And we do this yearly?
We do, yes.
Any questions from commission? No. Kim Heisler?
Kim Heisler, eighteen oh two, West Parkway Drive. Okay. I have five, four, four questions. And if you can write them down and make sure that if I run out of time, that they're all answered. I want to get more explanation on the appropriations for the sanitation funds, which looks like there's a huge amount, unless I'm reading it wrong. Wanted to find out also what the mausoleum funds actually go towards. Why is there so much going out for golf? It looks like there's roughly a, close to a million that's going out for twenty twenty-six. And then I wanted to find out what was going out for Hampton Group Hotel. I'm not sure. See, golf, refuge, sanitation and mausoleum refuge. That's two of them saying. Yeah, I wanted to find out the hotel, Hampton Group Hotel, how much we were going to be spending for them. But if you can explain why that amount of money, in particular the refuge or the sanitation, where that is set aside to go and what it's going to be used for? Because we were all under the impression that it was going to stay there or possibly return back to the people or kept up in the sanitation. So if you could.
Yeah, so obviously we will have money to pay for the contract to Rumpkey. And then
So in addition to us paying, you guys are paying additional monies to come to.
It's subsidizing what the rate to the citizen would be.
Okay.
And the money then to pay, as we've talked about, the allocation to the utilities business office as part of that allocation for the billing process. So the thing to keep in mind is whatever is, and this appropriation, as I said, is a rough estimate. These numbers will change as we actually get into the budget process here in a couple of months.
Three, but three million.
However, any of that money over and above what we need for the Rumpkey contract and even though that money is just coming in and out, basically, it still has to be appropriated. And also what we're paying to the utility, the UBO, any of that money that's over above that, that's not spent, would just, the appropriation goes away at year end, as it does every year. So appropriation is only good for one, one year, December thirty-first. If the money hasn't been spent, then it just goes away, goes back into the fund balance to be re-appropriated next year.
Okay, so let me ask you another question. So it's showing the actual numbers for twenty twenty-three is just a little over two million. Actual for twenty twenty-four, almost two million, a little under. That's when we were still taking care of it. Estimated for twenty twenty-five, now that the emergency thing came up and we had to actually outsource, now the appropriation went up to three million for estimated twenty twenty-five. And now for twenty twenty-six, it even went up higher than that to three million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand. Why is it continuing to go up when we had to have an emergency? Because it was costing us too much money because it's, we're spending more now.
Well, a lot of, a lot of times on these estimates, like I said, it is an estimate.
But why was the estimate more than?
Well, because, partly because of inflation. So typically, you know, in creating a budget, there are several factors that go into it. Some items, some line items, you know, are specific to a certain contract, for example. Some line items, you know, you just figure, okay, you look at the history and there might be, over time, there might be a certain percentage, you know, three or four percent or whatever it would be. So you just, as you create a forecast, then you just kind of use that. But then forecast typically, the farther out you go, kind of the less accurate they are. So that keeps changing, you know, as you get better information. So that's what I'm saying. When we do, this appropriation is just the, like, the draft appropriation is going with the tax budget to the county auditor is just at the draft. So we'll actually get into digging into the numbers here in the next six or eight weeks as we start the budget process. And then those numbers based on the most current information will be more accurate. Just like with the county auditor, the numbers, like it's talking about the tax, property tax they set, we give our best estimate based on our history and so forth. But they change those numbers and then they want us to change those two numbers in our first amendment certificate because they have the latest information.
And if you can follow up with the other.
Thank you.
Your time is up.
Yeah, the, so the questions were the mausoleum funds, the golf course and Hampton. Do you could follow up on those?
Well, yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to do that later as a public record request.
There's no other public comment cards?
Mr. Mayor, I would move the approval of resolution number R dash eighty-three dash twenty-five.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is resolution number eighty-four dash, R dash eighty-four dash twenty-five.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Wester Engineering Incorporated for continued stormwater manhole inspections for the City of Pickwa.
Good evening, Commission. Back in twenty twenty-one, we went out for requests for qualifications to inspect our nearly sixteen hundred stormwater manholes. This is the final round of inspections. There's three hundred and sixty. There's a map in there of the three hundred and sixty that need inspected. Many of these are in the right of way, which is going to take some traffic control. Hence, we saved these for last, but they are unfortunately the most expensive to do compared to the others. These are all based on pricing when we went, when we came into the agreement with Wester Engineering in twenty twenty-two. So this is the final leg of inspecting every stormwater manhole. And in a couple more resolutions, I'll discuss our steps after this. Any questions?
Any questions? There are no valid comment cards for, you didn't have one for this. You did not have a seat, please. I'm down right here. I didn't see eighty-four. Eighty-five. You didn't have one for this one.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the approval of resolution number.
I'll have a valid, hold on a second. Mr. Smith, you don't have an address listed. Do you live in the city?
I had one until you guys like retaliate. That's why I thought, give one if I have one. That's why you guys bring us out of town.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number R dash eighty-four dash twenty-five be approved.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You are able to talk in the public comment section.
A little late for that now.
Next is. Next is Resolution Number R dash eighty-five dash twenty-five.
A resolution authorizing an expenditure of matching grant funds for asbestos abatement at decommissioned Pickwa Power Plant.
Good evening, commission. In front of you is a resolution requesting authorization for the expenditure of funds for asbestos abatement activities at the old power plant. As a bit of history, the power plant was developed in nineteen thirty-three, and additions were made in nineteen thirty-nine, nineteen forty-seven, and nineteen sixty, and operations concluded at that plant in nineteen ninety-seven. Since then, it's been sat, underutilized, some city staff have stored equipment there. The property, the building is in good shape, and the property has been identified for potential redevelopment opportunities. However, there are, there have been some property assessments done, and some asbestos-containing materials identified in the property. Bit more history, in March of twenty twenty-four, commission passed a resolution authorizing Pick to enter into an agreement and to submit an application for funding from the Ohio Brown Field Remediation Program. Also in that month, former power system director committed to match twenty-five percent funds from the power fund to secure that grant. And earlier this year, a resolution was, or an ordinance was passed by commission which appropriated eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to the power budget for matching funds for the grant. This authorization, this resolution is to authorize the expenditure of those funds, so we're going to match twenty-five percent and get seventy-five percent from the Ohio Brown Field Remediation Program.
And get rid of the asbestos in that location?
That's correct, yes, so it'll, it'll abate the asbestos on the pipes in the equipment and secure that building for future redevelopment possibilities.
Any questions from commission?
Nope.
Kim Heiser? No questions, further comment cards? I will accept the motion.
Mayor, I've moved that we adopt Resolution R dash eight-five dash two-five.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Resolution Number R dash eighty-seven dash twenty-five.
A resolution establishing trick-or-treat beggars' night in the city of Pickwa as Thursday, October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from six P M to eight P M.
Any comments?
Nope.
I like having it on Thursdays. Is there an alternate date set? In case it rains?
I don't believe so. They, they generally just have the date, they don't have a rain date.
Should we amend the rain date in there for Friday? Or Sunday, should we?
Recommendation generally comes from Miami County Council. Yeah, so the whole county will probably use that date as a suggested date.
Should we amend it to say, to use the Miami County suggested date?
I've seen snow, I've seen rain.
Yeah, I've seen rain. Yeah, look, can, I would amend it.
All right, um, let's see here. Say that we amend a new section two in there to say that an alternative date would be supplied by Miami County.
Miami Council, yeah.
Then change section, current section two to section three. So that section two would say yes.
Things Miami County Council does is they look at church services, they look at football games, they have Friday nights, those kinds of activities, and so the Thursday tends to be a good date to do it for traffic as well as other activities going on.
So yes, so I've made, amendment would read as an alternative, and an alternative date will be as recommended by the Miami County Council. Sound good?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the amended Resolution eighty-seven, R dash eighty-seven dash twenty-five? Say aye.
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 All right, any public comment? There was no public comment card, so I'll take a motion.
I would move that we adopt Resolution R dash eighty-seven dash two-five as amended.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Last on our agenda is our Resolution Number R dash eighty-eight dash twenty-five.
A resolution for the city manager to enter into an agreement with Wester Engineering Incorporated to design a stormwater manhole rehabilitation and replacement project for the city of Pickwa.
Good evening. Good evening again, this is the, the second portion of this, this would be for after the inspection is done, and taking all the data from all the inspections, developing a project to repair and replace, potentially replacing twenty to twenty-five stormwater manholes completely, fixing a few problem areas that we've identified, along with our smoke testing, and then these inspections, and then anything that comes up in this final three-hundred-and-sixty inspections would be added to that. Also would be rehabilitation of some of the failing manholes, based on their scoring system.
They all won't be done at once, they will be done on a rotation or a year, so many?
Or do the worst first. So that's, that's why they're doing, the inspections basically identify which ones are worse, and there's about twenty to twenty-five that just need replaced now, so those are definitely getting done. And then there's other one, there's a scoring system, so we're going to try to get everything in priority one and two, which is the worst, to be completed in the, in twenty twenty-six project.
I mean, total manhole?
I think we're at sixteen-hundred stormwater, this is just stormwater, this is not the sanitary, so. And we're looking at this, the, the design of this, and this will get, this will get us to bid, and this will get Wester overseeing potentially a million-dollar rehab project next year. So this gets them to design it, get it out to bid, and then oversee the project, and then as first of the year, we're hoping to have all that done, and then we'll come back to you with an actual construction. We'll go out to bid and come back with you with, um, construction costs for all the work.
Do you, do you have a sense of how much of the smoke testing, um, problem areas have been remediated so far?
Uh, we're going to be doing some more smoke testing in a month or two, and we're I'd say we'll definitely, we'll be at maybe sixty percent of the city, seventy percent of the city after this round. It was scheduled to be about five years to do it all, so I think we're going on year three or four.
And if I, remember if I understood the smoke testing correctly last time, is that there are connections with the stormwater system into the sanitary system, and every time it rains hard, we're essentially waste-vanaging rainwater, when we really don't need to do that.
These couple of big rain events we had in the last couple of weeks, the wastewater plant can go anywhere from five million to pushing twenty million gallons within a couple hours. Now, it comes down fast, but there is definitely cross-connections that we're slowly identifying, and we want to repair. Some of the system is a hundred years old, and there's that, there weren't as good of records back in the day of who tied into what, and people just built stuff however they wanted to, and that's where we're finding a lot of those problems with the smoke testing.
Any other questions from commission? Kim Heiser?
Look, Kim Heiser, eighteen oh two West Parkway Drive. I know the, the other resolution that came up, you were talking about using, using them in twenty twenty-two. But has there been any, like, competitive bidding going on for?
That was the first process in twenty twenty-one, we went out and three people put in their qualifications to do this project. So we, we picked Wester back in twenty twenty-one, then we're using them for the whole project. That was kind of the competitive process, was back originally. We don't do it each year.
So that was pretty much guaranteed to them, that hey, if we do this now, it's?
Yeah, if they got that first word, which they did, compared to the other two people, then they were going to see all the inspections done and help us design the projects.
Okay. Is it, just asking, wouldn't it also be beneficial to maybe just ask and see what others would do?
Well, we did, all three, all three of those people submitted back in twenty twenty-one. Actually, no, it would be counterproductive now, because they have a method, they have a methodology of scoring it, doing it. If you switched each year, you'd have to give that information to someone else, go off a bid. We looked at pricing for the three, for all this testing, back originally when this happened, so I feel it'd be counterproductive to do this every year.
Okay, right, thanks.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I've moved that we adopt Resolution R dash eighty-eight dash two-five.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now on to the city manager's report.
Good evening, commission. Just real quick, I wanted to note that we received our new medic unit, medic unit twenty-one, it's a twenty twenty-five freightliner. It's replacing old medic unit twenty-one, which was a two-thousand-one medic unit, and it will be sold at GovDeals. Also noted, medic unit twenty-four, which was the frontline unit, was purchased in twenty twenty-one, and has a hundred twenty-one thousand miles on it already, it'll be moved to the, the second line. So we're pleased that we keep refreshing the equipment to enhance our ability to respond to public service. And I also wanted to demonstrate that, and the finance director mentioned that we moved a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars over to the the fire equipment fund.
Sounds good. Any questions for city manager? All right. Next is commissioner comments, we'll start with Commissioner Better.
We have a final report on the C D B G allocation process, and I received the email on that, so that, that's available for folks that may not be familiar with, with that. I think that new allocation is tentatively set for, what, October one? I think it's a two-year, two-year allocation. The county gets money, gets subdivided, Pickwa gets the chair, Troy gets his chair, Tim City gets its chair, so that, the information's out there. Let's see here. We're still looking for someone to assist with this bay and neutered program. We have a contract, and I think we've made appointments for about a hundred and fourteen cats at this point, and so we're anxious to increase that, and I personally would like to see that extend across the city. And we're not really doing that right now, because we lack people to help us with the project, so if you're a person who's interested in being involved in a, in a, in a feral cap project, that, that information could be directed either to me or to, to the city manager's office. Checking my notes here. I think we're in the process of phasing down the diversity committee due to federal concerns, and so more information will be?
More information to come. And it'll take a vote by a commission to decommission, but yes.
Yeah. Happy to report that our air conditioning project and the lighting project for both the Hotel Plaza project and the city building are in process. And so we're seeing some results of that with lighting, and my, my understanding is that the, the air conditioning portion will probably be done a season of the year when we don't need air conditioning very much, which makes a lot of sense, so that's, that's in process. And I'm curious how many openings we have on city boards and places for people to volunteer.
Yeah, I'm going to have a social media post for any open seats. We'll make that public.
Yeah, that's good, I think we're down to just a couple, but, but I think that's always a place where, if people are interested in, in volunteering and assisting in the city business, it's a good opportunity for folks.
Got a lot of volunteers out there now.
We do, and we, and the one, full slots if we can, so that's what we're doing. And that concludes, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Homan? I have your comment tonight. All right. Hopefully, everybody enjoyed Fourth of July, and got to go to the Pickle Fest out at the Pickle Center, and enjoyed the fireworks, and if you didn't see them, they were online, and they looked great, I got to see them, so. So, I'd like to thank the city for the fireworks display, and they did a good job. Next, I want to announce the passing of Paul Wholefling. He was a World War II veteran, a past county commissioner, and we'll hear a little bit more.
Wholefinger.
Wholefinger, I'm sorry. We'll hear more from him, about him, from Valerie Mulliken during public comment, but we send our condolences as a city and as a commission to his family and loved ones. Also, I want to mention, I met during mayor's meeting last Wednesday, a nice guy by the name of Rodney Creach. He actually is a state representative, House District Forty. He's going to be running for state senator in our district, and I'm not sure which, what our exact district is. But he came up and got the meeting, I've known him for three or four years, he also covers where I work at. Highly recommend this guy, he's, he's very entertaining, he's got a lawn care business. He comes to the career center that I work at, and works with the students there, gets them out, and, and talks to them in the classrooms, lets, lets them know, you know, he had a small business that bloomed into a big business, and and he's also giving back now as a representative, and he wants to be a state senator, so.
He would replace Steve Hoppin.
Yes, exactly, so. And with that, I have, we will not have a commission, the next commission meeting will not be held, because it's National Night Out, so all the commissioners will be out, visiting all the National Night Out parties on the, is that the fifth? August fifth?
It's August fifth.
August fifth, that's what I thought. So it'll be, the nineteenth will be the next, August nineteenth will be the next commission meeting that we'll have.
We do have a smattering of special meetings. Calendar, right?
Yeah, some of them, they've been changed a little bit, so. So just look at the calendar for the city, and see whether our special meetings are in next meetings. And that's all I have, and with that, I need the motion to adjourn to public comment.
So moved?
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned to public comment. All right. First up on public comment, David Smith.
How you guys doing? Been a minute, ain't it? I hate to cause you headaches, son. No, I'm going to. My name is David Smith, the plaintiff in the federal lawsuit resulted in the court order signed on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Slow down, Harry.
I need to address the That's okay.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I, I was fine, but it didn't bother me, it's public comment, I'm good. I need to address my deep disappointment in how the city of Pickwa, the commissioners, have responded to the requirements set out in that agreement concerning everyone's constitutional rights. Some ongoing failures to meet court obligations. Beyond disappointing, there's still no proof of all five commissioners or city officials having, and I said, all city officials having completed the required constitutional training. According to the agreement, this training was supposed to be finished within six months, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. There has been no transparency or public update about whether you have fulfilled these vital responsibilities that you're required to do. You said you would, I don't think you have.
No, I have.
I, 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 public comment. Because we got you in trouble the first time. Let's be clear, all right? Watching YouTube videos on the Constitution isn't even going to work. I, it needs to be documented, that's not legitimate training. Feds produce the records of certification for these classes, and it's, it's, it's a standard. You're violating the intent signed agreement. You guys signed it, you're violating it. Training it as such is disrespectful to the founding fathers, the legal process to all Americans who value genuine civil education. Residency rule council procedures are being ignored, clearly we saw that happen with me already, that's going to get you a bit. Despite the court's order, the residence requirement has not been removed from the council rules. This lack of meaningful action undermines trust and violates what we agreed to in the federal court. It blocks residents from participating and erodes the rights of Pickwa community members, not just those that live within city limits. There have also been continuing problems during commission meetings. Speakers are interrupted by council members, time lost, deducted from their allotted seven minutes they're supposed to have. At no point has this time ever been restored, violating both the spirit and letter of the court orders. The whole intent was to ensure the public has a fair opportunity to speak. The whole intent was to ensure the public has a fair opportunity to speak, an opportunity that current process keeps denying. You should listen when people tell you things. The Constitution still isn't displayed appropriately. The agreement specifically said the United States Constitution must be posted inside the city commission chambers. Hanging on the wall out in the hallway does not satisfy that requirement. Full show of what you guys promised, the plaintiffs and the rest of the public, which they probably didn't even get to see this. The pattern of disregard for the public was pretty disgusting. These failures and omissions are not isolated. They reflect a longstanding pattern of disregarding a binding court order addressed to both the city of Pickwa and Mr. Orbador for the four of us who brought this lawsuit. Eh, you know what? You've ignored it, basically. So we're just gonna drag you back into court again. You don't, you wanna play these games, we're gonna play these games. Did it to you once, do it to you again. The community deserves a lot better than what they're getting right now. You guys were ordered by a federal court to uphold both the Constitution and terms of this agreement. Refusing to do so is unacceptable. You are not above the law. You got it? You're not above the law. People of Pickwa deserve to not have their rights or their dignity trampled on by the likes of you guys. So clearly, you didn't learn the first time. You violated me here by not letting me speak. I'll be seeing you all in federal court again, and this time it's going to hurt real bad. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you. Valerie Mulliken.
I have five things to address. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank the city of Pickwa for the phenomenal fireworks and the support of the Pickwa Fest, which also supported Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support. We were the benefactors of a car show that was put on by the Pickwa Center, and we are very, very grateful to the community. The city of Pickwa residents came out in full force. It was an incredible, incredible day. We were able to garner many people from outside of Miami County, outside of the state of Ohio, including as far north as Michigan, Indiana, Kentucky. I don't say that lightly because those people come to our town, and they get to see our town, and we get to talk to them. We were able to accommodate one such couple that came in from southeastern Ohio and spent the night here at the Comfort Inn. They had a great stay. They enjoyed themselves, and they plan to come back. So I guess we sold Pickwa pretty good. I'm pretty happy about that in regards to what we had available to honor them and to serve them here in the community. And again, I thank the city of Pickwa for putting on that fireworks display, and I'll be eager to see where we go with the Americas Two Fifty in the next year. Very excited with that as well. The second thing, I wanted to find out who I need to speak to, and if you can wait until I'm done with all these so that this time I'm able to get everything in, that'd be great. I would like to find out who I need to talk to about making the city of Pickwa a Purple Heart city and also an Elizabeth Dole Foundation caregiver city. Both of these honors provide for an open door to serving our veterans and our veteran caregivers. And currently, we have over seven and a half million disabled veterans in America. And I can tell you that our job at Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support is just getting busier by the day. So I would like to know who I speak to about that. The third thing is, how do we schedule as an organization an opportunity during the commission meeting to speak about our organization, what we're doing, how we're doing it, and how the city of Pickwa has played a role in where we are at as an organization? So I'd like to know about that because I was told last year that we could come in and do a presentation during the city commission meeting, and I would like to take advantage of that. As we have grown exponentially, and we are currently trying to find suitable, a suitable space to move to, we're hopeful that we found a space, but it's not looking promising at any time of short order. And anybody who's been to our office recently, which none of you guys have ever been to our office, our office looks like a show of orders right now because we're out of space. We're a thirteen hundred square foot space. We're serving an average of fifteen families a week in a food pantry that these people have to walk through, a gaggle of veterans who come in and occupy every seat in our space. So we have an occupancy of twenty-five people in our building at any given time, and we max that out every Thursday. So that you know, we would invite you to come in and see what we are doing. We are open on Thursdays from nine AM until one thirty PM, and we are open by invitation and by appointment anytime after that. We will be open next week, June twenty, excuse me, July twenty-first through the twenty-sixth from the hours of eight AM to four PM. We are collecting household goods that are in new or gently used, clean, cannot have cat pee on it. I know you love your cats, Mr. Better, but cat pee, dog pee, baby puke, stains, we don't want your stuff, but we would really like to have those new and gently used items. We are doing a homage sale to help raise funds to be able to move to a larger space. So those are all in regards to Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support. As you mentioned a moment ago, Paul Holfinger. Paul Holfinger was a World War II veteran. Paul was a very proud farmer here in Miami County. He was on the Pickwa City Commission. And then later, when he was able to get his property unannexed out of the city of Pickwa and into the township, he became a Washington Township trustee. Paul is also a community member who has been much loved throughout his time here. He comes from a long history of Holfingers in the area. His home, his homestead on Farrington Road was recently declared an Ohio Century Farm, which is amazing. That means that it's over a hundred years old in their family. And that is an exciting, that is an exciting title. There are very few of those here in Miami County, and I'm proud on behalf of that family to be able to say that that has been honored to them. Paul is also a former member of the Pickwa Civic Band and has performed up until just about two years ago. He's been performing, so we love Paul. And we are sad that his family has lost him today, but so grateful that this man had ninety-nine years on earth. And then the other thing I want to mention is during your commission meeting, Resolution eighty-two dash twenty-five, your commission secretary read it, and she stated space, I believe it was the one oh one and one oh two for the rental space. And your commission meeting notes for tonight says two oh one and two oh two. So you probably need to revisit that and ensure that those records are appropriately amended. Thank you. Let me know how we can get a Purple Heart city, Elizabeth Dole city, and how we can schedule-
Are there any cities nearby that have those? Maybe we could reach out to them and ask them how they did it.
Funny you ask that. As a matter of fact, I actually talked to Casey Heinz about this when she was the mayor. She said, oh, we gotta get a steering committee, we gotta do all kinds of things. And I said, great, how do we get that going? I'll get with you.
There you go.
When was Casey Heinz mayor? Actually, the city of Trotwood is an Elizabeth Dole city, and I believe the city of Middletown is a Purple Heart city. So it's not something that's prevalent in the area, but it's something that needs to change. These organizations and these titles hold a great deal of opportunity for our community.
Your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Brother Stephen?
Thank you, Pickwa.
I think you're in full name and-
Yes. I am Brother Stephen Gerard Zalovsky. My voting address is in eleven oh nine West Eighth Street, Lorain, Ohio, the international city of Ohio off Lake Erie. Beloved mayor and commissioners and citizens, I often like to open up with Holy Scripture because that's a good thing to do. And today, I have a Holy Scripture. It's on your Bible bookmarks, Isaiah forty-four twenty-four. It's a very pro-life scripture. It says, "This is what the Lord says: He who made you, who formed you in the womb and who will help you. This is what the Lord says your Redeemer, who formed you in the womb."
I am the Lord, the Maker of all things, who stretches out the heavens and the earth, who spreads out the earth by itself.
Keep going.
Okay.
Technology difficulties.
I read the disclaimer.
Okay. I'll speak up a little louder, everybody. So I delivered Bible bookmarks. If some of you citizens do not give one, please see me at the end, and I'll be happy to give you it. Beloved mayor and council, there's some vital information on the Bible bookmark. I would like to say that a book you can order and read is called The American Covenant by Marshall Foster. That's a very good book. Kirk Cameron actually supports the ordering of that book. Put it next to your Bible and read it daily. A book too is by Father Robert Spitzer, a Jesuit, a former president of Gonzaga University. He wrote the book Healing the Culture. It talks about the gold rule and the silver rule. For those of you who love to read, I would encourage you to also do that. Also Seth Grover has the book The Nineteen Sixteen Project. It talks about why the culture of death came in America. His mother actually did a lot of pro-life in Los Angeles. So that's just a little tidbit on the Bible bookmark. I do love to sing, and so I'd like to just add on the back of the Bible bookmark, Ann Delaney wrote the song, a pro-life song called Let the Beating Heart, and I'll just debut it. Let the beating heart, let the beating heart show you there is life in the womb. Pretty song, actually. It's a lullaby. So beloved mayor, commissioners and citizens, I've delivered also via email a wonderful introductory page, followed with eleven content pages on new Ohio personhood cities. And during my final discourse, I'm gonna go over some of the details. And citizens, if you have your cameras out at the end, you can take and make copies of this for transparency purposes. Okay? One of the first pages that I delivered to you is content page two. "I submit to all of you a wonderful new resolution in support of the Pickwa, Ohio Declaration of a Safe Preborn Personhood City." Wow. There's a lot of good information in there. Please review it. But in a nutshell, one of the whereas's says, "Ohio's motto is with God, all things are possible." So true, that's our motto in Ohio. Okay? And whereas the protection of all human life, even life peacefully developing in the womb is important to the people of the peaceful and safe city of Pickwa. Okay? There's some other whereas's. There's some further resolves. Please delve into that language. I'm hoping you're gonna pass the personhood resolution possibly by Christmas. I should give you some time to digest everything. Okay? Page content three, citizens right now, you have this charter. You've done your charter review, I'm told, every ten years, and you can modify that charter. And you can actually put in a preamble to your charter. Your charter, I've reviewed initially. You have no preamble right now, but that's okay. You can actually put new wholesome preborn personhood language in the charter where fatherhood and motherhood and childhood are preserved in the city of Pickwa three hundred and sixty-five days a year. That's something that you can now do. Okay? Content page four, guess what? I provided you the data. Everybody voted on the Ohio Prop a couple years ago in twenty twenty-three, and Ohio, of course, decided to pass that and put it in the state constitution with a thirteen-point-six percentage point victory, whatever you wanna call it, reproductive rights or whatever have you. But guess what? Miami County actually voted to defeat it by twenty-eight percentage points. That means you've got the vote right now to modify your charter and to empower you to pass the personhood resolution. That's one of the reasons and factors I'm excited to be in front of all of you. Okay? I've done that research. If you move to content page number five or number six, that's before you, I was able to meet Nellie Gray, the founder of the Washington DC March for Life before she passed away. And Nellie saw the Life Peace on banner, which is on your Bible bookmarks. And you know, Nellie said to me, as I deliver this message all over the United States as a naval veteran with honorable discharges, she said, Brother Steve, add the term personhood. So content page six describes why former Supreme Court Justice Rehnquist posed the importance of personhood way back in the nineteen seventy-three Roe decision. So you're getting vital information that many citizens don't even realize. Content page seven is our Personhood Strategic Action Plan all over Ohio. Beloved mayor, I humbly ask that you would announce that public safety is one of your top priorities, and that includes the baby peacefully developing in the mother's womb? Well, in nineteen sixty-one, I was a person peacefully developing in my mother's womb, and I bear witness that everybody here was a person peacefully developing in your mother's womb before your day of birth.
Brother Steve, I hate to cut you off, but you have seven minutes in your time.
Okay, and it is up. Well, God bless you. Thank you for the love of the city, and I hope you'll review everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for that moving presentation.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Jim Sheets?
Jim Sheets, seven twenty-nine South Downey Street. Once again, I'd like to hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. I didn't make it out to the Pickwa Fest, but I was at a friend's party, but it sounded like it was a great time. I was also doing the backstroke at my swimming pool. The mayor's, I wanna piggyback on some of what the mayor's talking about. Mr. Rodney Creech, I actually got to meet this gentleman, very nice gentleman. I'm hoping we all get to hear from him sometime soon. On that note, I have a, like a podcast, live show kind of thing on Facebook that I invited him to come on and talk next week, which is a date next Thursday. I'm stupid here. Invite him right offhand.
Twenty-four.
Thank you. Thank you very much. The twenty-fourth at five thirty. It's called Point Back to Sheets with Jim Sheets. If anybody's interested in that, check it out. I'm gonna have Mr. Creech on there. Anybody who has any questions for him, please contact me. You can find me on Facebook, or you can text me, nine three seven two one four nine four five one. If you have any questions for the gentleman, he's gonna come on and we'll talk about what he has planned for the state. So I think that'd be all good. On that note, like I said, I do have a program that I'm doing on Facebook, and I would like to get with Valerie back there and help her with her stuff if she would let me, if she would like to get together with me, and we can get her information out there, or maybe even come on and she can talk about that, Valerie.
You're interested, we can talk.
So maybe you should get free moment with her. One more thing I'd like to say, and I, and you all know, I don't come up here too often. I don't come up here and usually, excuse my language, bitch and complain, but I have an issue that I'd like to address with you commissioners. And I'm asking each one of you to give me your opinion on this. How long does it take for you guys to answer an email?
That's on the email.
Yeah, how long it is? How long, yeah, how long do you, how long do you take to answer one of your constituents' emails?
It depends on what it is and how much-
How long?
It depends on what it is?
Okay, well, Jim, I've sent you two emails in the past months and haven't heard a thing from you.
I have never received a new email.
I have proof that I sent it to you. Where Nellie Gray, as you say you got it or not, I have proof that I sent it to you.
That's what I would suggest as an alternative. I would suggest that my city email could be audited by the IT director, and I've already asked the mayor if he would be a person who would follow the good safety guide. Because I've never had the phone call from you.
Well, no, I didn't call you. I just sent an email because I don't, you know, I figured, you know, you would answer it after two, after a month. So it's just a simple question and-
Ever, ever.
Okay, well, that's what you wanted to say with it.
Say what it's about?
Yeah, it's just a simple question about the pavilion because I know you're really into that. And I've been getting people asking me questions, what's the deal with the pavilion? And, you know, they're really passionate about what can they do or what's the future of it. So I was like, well, who else to ask? Because like I said, I know you're really into that. So, you know, I was just kind of like, hey, it's been over a month since I've heard anything. Well, a month or whatever, so...
Maybe we could find like Andy Height or somebody to come and do your podcast. He's been on the pavilion, and you know, the guy that comes every week to the mayor's meeting and brings me an update. Mr. Peltier, maybe he could hop on and do your podcast.
Well, maybe I can get with you on that, Chris. You send me that information. And I offer Tom and Jim, I would like for you to come on there too, to come on my podcast and just talk. You don't even have to talk about politics. Just talk about life. I've offered Chris, and then we've had a conflict of...
Every time.
And yeah, so I think, you know, if you guys are interested, like I said, it don't even have to be about city. Just talk about life. Talk about what's going on. Like I said, I extend that out to you too, Jim, and the other two guys, but I was just curious about that, you know, why I haven't got answered.
We'll see. He says he didn't get it. I told him that you sent it, but...
Yeah, I mean, I can't even show you on my phone, Jim, if you really want to see it. I mean, I'm not lying to you. And if it didn't send, it would come back to me. I would thought and say, hey, let's just go wrong address. I mean, I'll show you, so...
I have a telephone that has an answering machine on it, and we live across the street, so...
Well, you know, I get that we live across the street, but I'm not looking out my window every day to see whether you're home because I do things at night. You do things at night, so I'm sure you don't want me knocking on your door at nine o'clock at night, asking you questions. And I'm usually in bed by 8:30, so... But yeah, so we can look into that. And if you're having, we want to talk about the pavilion, and you get with me on that. Like I said, I've got people coming to me asking me questions, you know, so I'm...
We're in a big presentation that will come probably in August, and we anticipate some other activity about the fountain park as well as the pavilion.
Yeah, because I'd really like to see, I hate to see that go. So we got their asking what the future plans for that after they build, after it's redone, what's any plans, you know, you have for that, or is it just going to set idle? And then we go right back where we was with it, so... And that was just a couple of things. That was one thing people were asking me, so... All right, I mean, that's all I really got to say. But like I said, Tom, Chris, Jim, maybe if you guys are interested, my podcast or whatever you want to call it, it's basically about Pickwatt. I want to get information out there to Pickwatt. People saying we're not getting info out there. I figured I'd lend a hand and try to get information out there.
You've been getting, Joe Wilson was on your last...
Yeah, Mr. Wilson came on, and he talked about his boat, the neighbors helping neighbors, and the night out. So those two good things. So then just coming Thursday, I had Mr. Creach coming on there. Like I said, please, if anybody has any questions for him, please contact me.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, I would like to talk to him. He says he'll answer anything, so that's all I got, so thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Heinz? Kim Heinz, 1802 West Parkway. I want to piggyback on what Jim said. I also have folks talking to me and asking, you know, hey, I've sent emails to these guys. Multiples, even Paul. Like zero comment back, crickets. Zero, none, and nothing. So is, can you tell me what your email address is? Is it like your first initial, last name at?
Ward, Ward three com.
Okay. Maybe, can you put that in your agenda packet? I know, but for some reason, all these people are still asking.
You want it on the, you want it on the...
Okay, so it's like, okay, so mention what it is, so people is...
Ward three com.
Ward one, ward two, ward three, ward four, or ward five, wherever you're at.
C O M L, ward whatever.
Okay, so ward, whatever number, say, one dot or com at...
Pickwatt.
Pickwatt O H dot gov.
Dot gov.
Okay. So I mentioned this a really long time ago though, but if you guys get something, just a real quick, hey, I got your message. I won't get back to you right away, or just acknowledgement that you received something goes a really long way. I think that would be really good. Because otherwise, I mean, the reputation is so bad that your minds just go completely somewhere else. So if you can at least, just a quick, hey, got you. I'll get back to you when I can get a chance. That would be great. That would be great. Okay, and also, I know, Chris, you mentioned earlier that we now have a technical team. Hang in there, right? So is this...
Technical team?
Yeah, technical team. Hang in there because we're working with, I guess, the video and audio again. So is that, that's what you mentioned earlier?
We have a new media technician.
Media technician. Media?
For the meetings, and tonight is their first meeting.
Okay, and the reason that we got rid of the other guy is?
Other guy left.
Because why? He left?
Yes.
Okay, so we're yet again starting. So is this, do we finally have new technology then?
It should be on CIC Plus. They should have streamed tonight.
They should have been live streamed and still continuing, or only the official meeting?
What do you mean?
Is it still streaming live now?
No.
Okay. That's my time. Just wanted to get that confirmation. Okay. Another question, when I was up here earlier, since when is it okay? I mean, we have the city officials here. We've got you guys who meet with the city official to know what's going on and everything about the appropriations, and we've got these guys making sure that what you say is correct. Since when is it okay to divert and say, "I think you need to do an information request for those answers. That's best to do that." Which Mr. Oberdorfer did. When everybody was here, they could have very easily said what the appropriations was going to be for, for the golf, for the hotel, for the mausoleum fund. It could have been taken care of right here, but instead of doing it in the public where other people might be watching and see, he chose to like shut off the public again so that I have to waste my time again. Make the little request, make it official. That's, I can do that. I do that a lot. But then wait, I don't know, day, two days, week, two months, whatever, when we couldn't have that information. The resolution passes in one time. It'd be nice to have an answer right now.
It was an estimate.
I understand it's an estimate, but my question, so...
Question was what? Did you want the actual figures or the?
No, what are they appropriated for? It could have been, oh, you know, a million dollars for the golf course. Well, we're going to get, you know, a whole new clubhouse, or we're going to get like 40 new. There's got to be something. I mean, it's just like sanitation.
That's not an appropriation. That's a statement to the county auditor. Appropriations come through the budget process.
Right, but the appropriations are set up because there's something already in mind typically.
No, we go through a process of looking at all those numbers, and that happened a couple of meetings. I think it's important. We do three readings on that and have a chance to sit down and ask good questions.
Okay, we'll still request them then. Okay, so another question, Chris, I'm going to ask you this directly. Earlier, Mr. Oberdorfer had mentioned, when we were talking about leasing for $30,000, the green room for Lock Nine and stuff like that. He mentioned all the plans that's going to be going along with hotels and stuff like that. And he had mentioned how it has already been proven. Can you get information from him or how it's actually been proven and what he really meant by that?
Yeah.
Because again, we're a small city, spending lots of money out, but how in the world can it be proven?
From what he said and what was in the packet, that if maximum occupancy occurs at like 68%, even if we just said 68% occupancy, we would make our money back plus some. We would make that $30,000 investment back if everybody books that, those rooms.
See, I was under, I guess maybe I didn't read it right, but I was under the impression that it was costing us that money.
It cost us the 30,000, but then Hampton's going to use it for wedding venues and whatnot as well.
So it doesn't sit there.
Mm-hmm. So that's why I asked, is it revenue neutral? Meaning, is it going to cost us anything? He said, "If we get the 68% occupancy, it won't cost us. We'll make money." So that's, Jim, it's a big question.
And then my last thing that I wanted to mention is out in my area, there's going to be a community crowd sale this weekend in the Park Ridge area. And I'm doing my part with over the 400 houses in that area, and there's tons of traffic that comes in. So without even spending any money, I'm driving traffic to Pickwatt. It doesn't take like thousands and millions of dollars to do so, but if you guys are in the area, it'd be great to...
I'll ask the police to make sure that the traffic's not too congested up there as well. Help out.
And I know I mentioned it before, but...
Go ahead. Your time is up, yes.
Having at least four of you up there...
All right.
To make that change and not wait 10 years until it comes up again since you just...
All right, so to pass anything, if we have a majority, if there's three of us, all three of us have to agree. Two out of three cannot, two out of three won't get it done. Even though two out of three is the majority, all three of us have to agree on something or to pass it. Okay? So last person for public comment, Solishalak.
Hello, Solishalak. I would just like to say I love the Hans Pavilion, one of the best things that we have in this town. So many wonderful memories. I also wanted to say, Mr. Governor, I would love nothing more than to be involved in the feral cat program. I am actually very good at taming feral cats, and I would love nothing more than to help you. I was actually sitting here thinking hurting feral cats would probably be easier than dealing with you guys. So I would give that a try. But I guess, I don't know. I guess there's a saying, you get what you pay for, right? And I think you guys are making, what, 300, 400 bucks a month? So I wanted to bring that up. I think it's one of the biggest issues we have in this town. You know, you make what, 300, 400 bucks per month? That's a big problem. We pay the city manager more than the governor makes. And I think he's just terrible. So I would like to suggest we lower the amount that we pay a city manager. We raise how much the commissioners make, because I'd like an actual intelligent commissioner. You know, because right now it's not working with the $300, $400 budget commissioners. I think we need actual commissioners. So if we pay more, perhaps someone with an actual brain would be enticed to apply for the position. So we don't just have like placeholders. So that was my first, you know, thing I wanted to bring up. Because I mean, you know, paying 300 to 400 dollars a month is just like, that's ridiculous. And I guess unless you're like a, want to be a politician, and then I guess it would make sense for you to like, you know, put that in your resume. But, you know, that's just about as ridiculous as saying that we only got $500 a month for battery burning. I mean, I think that's crazy. Running old water plant companies to burn batteries without a permit for that amount. I mean, that's just insane. Because we were never told that you were allowing the battery, the burning of batteries out there, and that seems criminal to me, but I'm not an expert. But I did mail a letter to the chief of police. The county prosecutor got an email. I've requested many, many, many alphabet agencies to help. So if anyone is watching and actively investigating, I suggest that you check out the NATO cage codes for the guys that were burning batteries out here. They're very interesting, and it should help out a lot. Those codes allow international government and private entity battery burning testing here. So, you know, you might want to take a look into that. And if no one is investigating, maybe you should. So if you're wondering if the community needs help, well, we do, because we've got budget level commissioners. But I would like to now go back to and address what Mr. Smith had said earlier. You know, I'm just gonna say it's beyond disappointing that there's still no proof that all five commissioners and all city officials have completed and they require constitutional training. According to the agreement that was signed on October 30th, 2024, you had six months for everybody to get it done. And a YouTube video on the constitutional, the Constitution is not legitimate training. That's watching a video. It doesn't produce a record or a certificate, and it certainly does not meet the standard intended by the signed agreement. So just wanted to bring that up. Also, the residency rule and council procedures are continually being ignored since October 30th. Despite the federal court's order to you all, the residency requirement has not been removed from the council rules. So that is just absolutely, that's absolutely disgusting. But maybe you guys didn't read it, or you're still sounding it out. I don't know. You know, there's, if you need help, understand the material, I'm happy to help. There, you know, like David said, the Constitution still isn't displayed appropriately. I mean, there were only a handful of items that the federal court told you to do. And like, I don't know, I guess you don't like the federal court. Maybe you don't like the Constitution. You sure didn't want to do any training. I mean, goodness, and that's, "The failures of the missions are not isolated," as David stated. "They reflect a longstanding pattern of disregarding a binding court order, addressed to both the city of Pickwatt and Paul Oberdorfer. The four of us who brought the lawsuit are preparing to take further legal action." So God bless America. God bless feral cats. God bless chickens in the Hans Pavilion. Oh, and last thing, I'm getting people texting saying, "Oh, you don't have public comments." So people are mad about that. And lastly, I'm just disgusted that, you know, over 2,500 dead bodies are going to be dug up from our cemetery, and people are going to be forced to move. I heard that, and I, you know, if that's incorrect, I'd love to know, but I heard that at the damn hydraulic canal thing, and that is just disturbing to me, because my whole family is out there. My beloved priest, Father Caserta, is here. There's a lot of babies. There's pets. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, do people even know that the bodies are, there's 25 plus hundred bodies that are going to be dug up? I just don't know why anyone's talking about that. So stay off my dead grandma's body. Thank you.
Thank you. We good? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right. We are adjourned.